I'd like to call this village... It's me doing it. I'd like to call this village board meeting of February... Of January 10th, 2019, to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Excused.
Excused.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Maritato.
Excused.
Trustee Pojak.
Here.
Trustee Schroeder.
Here.
Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Join the Village of Glendale Heights in celebrating National Salute to Hospitalized Veterans Month by participating in the Valentine's for Veterans collection efforts. Annually, the Village delivers beautifully written and decorated valentines, collected from the community, to Illinois veterans homes and veteran hospitals. Drop off your valentines at Village Hall by Wednesday, February 6th, to ensure a timely delivery for Valentine's Day. Please do not decorate your cards with glitter, include social media contact information, or include envelopes with the cards. Should you have any questions, please call Nicole Lewis at (630) 909-5327. Join us Saturday, February 2nd, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon for coffee with the Mayor and Village Board. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Mayor or Village Board, please call the Mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Light.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Dance the night away at the annual Daddy Daughter Dance, which is set for Saturday, February 9th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at Glendale Lakes Golf Club. Our theme this year is "A Night in Paris." The evening will include dancing, dinner, and every girl will receive a souvenir to remember the night. Register by February 2nd. Those registering after the deadline will be charged a $10 late fee based on available space. For more information, call the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Register today for the Mother and Son Dance. Moms, put your dancing shoes on, and boys, come show off your best dance moves as we have "A Night in Paris." Enjoy an activity-filled evening, complete with dinner and dessert. The dance is Saturday, February 23rd, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at the Center for Senior Citizens. Please register by February 16th. The registration fee is $55 for residents, $65 for non-residents, and $26 for each additional son. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060.
Thank you, Mike. Clerk Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
It's hard to believe, but spring is right around the corner. Get ahead of the game with a day dedicated to trying different sports at Wreckin' the Hub on Saturday, January 26th, from 9:30 a.m. to noon at the Sports Hub. This event includes obstacle course races, prizes, demonstrations, door prizes, fitness orientations, discounted registrations, and much more. The day kicks off with a free continental breakfast, so come hungry. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Pojak.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Village of Glendale Heights is collecting broken or unused holiday lights. Lights can be dropped off at the Public Works Garage located at 1635 Glen Allen Road on weekdays from 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Lights accepted for recycling include all colors and lengths of mini lights, C7 lights, C9 lights, rope lights, LED lights, and extension cords. For more information on holiday lights recycling, please call (630) 260-6000. Are you looking to market your business in Glendale Heights? Consider joining the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce. The Glendale Heights Chamber meets for a monthly luncheon on the first Wednesday of each month from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Network with other businesses, learn about different events in the community, market, and grow your organization. For more information on joining the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce, please email director@glendalehighschamber.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester.
Trustee Schroeder.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Scam artists come in a variety of forms, and the Village of Glendale Heights is warning residents of potential imposters posing as representatives, inspecting water meters. If any maintenance or appointment is required by the Village, we will schedule with you beforehand. So Village employees will also have visible identification. As always, please feel free to call the Village at (630) 260-6000 to inquire about a representative or call 911 if you believe the person could be a potential threat. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary. Um, next on our agenda, I would like your, um... on the appointment of Chris Navarro to the Character Counts Coalition. Would somebody like to make a motion?
So moved, Mayor.
Second. All those... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't think I see Chris here, but... Thank you, Chris, for stepping up and going in the Character Counts Coalition. I think this is yours, Doug?
Thank you, Mayor and Village Board. Tonight, we have kind of a full night of police stuff. We get to honor and recognize our newest officer, Robert Whitmore, and we get to celebrate the retirements of two officers, which we'll get to after we swear in Robert. So we were lucky enough to kind of suddenly steal Robert. Come on up here. Very quickly from another department, so I won't name the department. But things worked out in our favor, so we were able to get Robert here to be hired and sworn in as a newest Glendale Heights Police Department police officer. Robert's gonna be badge number 3006. He's here with his dad, Steven, right? His dad's here with him. Robert's a resident of Oak Brook, Illinois. He is our first, and probably gonna be only, officer who graduated from Penn State University. He's got a degree in criminal justice and a minor in Spanish. He's recently graduated, May of 2018. All of this couldn't have been possible without our police commissioners who are behind me. Mr. Will, Vic Macias, Rick Schwerner's not here tonight, the chairperson, but they have worked very, very hard to get us these officers. Had a meeting last night, and we kind of fast-tracked Robert into the position he's in today. He starts the academy on Monday at the State Police Academy, so it was kind of fast-tracked, and we appreciate Robert working with us to get that done. Marie? Marie Schmidt's gonna swear you in, Robert. Can you get the follow-along?
May I please raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Robert Whitmore.
Having been appointed to the Office of Probationary Police Officer...
Having been appointed to the Office of Probationary Police Officer...
In the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, and the County of DuPage, aforesaid...
In the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, and the County of DuPage, aforesaid...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Probationary Police Officer to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Probationary Police Officer to the best of my ability. This is Robert's badge number. He's badge number 3006. He is gonna be starting first thing tomorrow morning with HR and getting all the paperwork filled out and completed. And say, he starts the academy on Monday, so we've kind of rushed this through. But thank you to the Village Administration for letting us do it. It's sincerely appreciated. This will replace one of the retirements we'll talk about here in a second. Introduce yourself and walk around and come back.
Congratulations, Village Board.
Go white. Thank you. And if I could, Peter. Come up here a second. Mayor and Village Board, Executive Board. You guys have not yet met Peter Kang. Peter is one of our other newest officers. He's just completing his first week at the Police Academy. We swore him in a couple weeks ago at, not at a board meeting, downstairs. If, Peter, you just want to introduce yourself to everyone? But he's at the academy starting this week. Peter's actually a resident of the Village.
No friction between Purdue and Penn State, huh?
Uh, Peter's actually a NAVAL... Came from the, not the NAVAL Academy, was listed in NAVAL in the Navy. He was a submariner and an electronics guy, and he's actually a certified bike mechanic, which will help us out tremendously due to the fleet of bicycles we have downstairs that need to be serviced. I just want to introduce you to Peter. Peter came here tonight to recognize Robert, so... Thank you, Peter. All right. Farmer laid as usual. Bruce and Randy, come on up here. So this is actually a very sad day for me. All retirements are. I have spent every day of my career working with these guys. 62 years of service is standing in front of you. They were actually only, they were hired in two separate years, but like 10 days apart. So it's been a long road for both Randy and Bruce. I'll go through a little bit of their history individually, but everybody's greatest day in law enforcement is today. For Bruce, it was January 6th. For Randy, it's actually tomorrow. But living to getting through your career and getting your pension and having a long, healthy, successful retirement is why we look for, and our goal as law enforcement officers is to get through that and be healthy and to be able to enjoy the rest of our retirement lives however you want to do it. And it's an honor for me to stand here with both of you to watch you leave the department, if you will, on your own terms, which is how everybody should. And I am gonna truly miss both of you. You have done nothing but serve the Village of Glendale Heights, the residents of Glendale Heights honorably, professionally, ethically for the 31 years you have both been here. It's been truly a pleasure working with both of you. It's been, I say, every day I've come to work for 31 years, 30 years that I've been here, 31 in July, these guys have been here. And it's gonna be, it's just gonna be a different police department every day you're not here. So everything that you guys have done for the last 31 years, you've left a legacy that you should be proud of, both of you. And I'll talk a little bit about that. So Bruce is like two weeks senior to Randy. Do I even hear the mic? Bruce was hired December 30th, 1987. Bruce is that unique individual who gets an extra week of vacation on a day that he can never use it. Every five years. And had to carry it over, and it was interesting. His official retirement date was January 6th, 2019. He's here tonight with his daughter Danielle, his son Alexander, and his other daughter Victoria. Right there in the front row. They've been through Bruce's career with him. Bruce has been a patrol officer his entire career. He was a K-9 officer, was instrumental in getting our K-9 program started, was one of two original K-9 officers with Ron Kerstein. And a testament to both of these officers' careers is in the back of the room. And how many of our retired officers are here tonight to recognize Bruce and Randy's career isn't unnoticed and is sincerely appreciated by me and I'm sure by Randy and Bruce? So from retired Chief Mabbett to retired Commander Barrick to Deputy Chief E. Walt and Deputy Chief Byalis, Sergeant Pinzac, Wendy Toigo, Lillian. Nice to see you. The testament to these officers that our retired guys came back to recognize them. So, thank you. Bruce was a K-9 officer as part of his K-9 with Tenno, his dog. He had many numerous arrests. Going through his file today, Tenno caught some good bad guys, armed robbery suspect he caught in Warrenville on a track, some pretty large drug seizures. Bruce's time with the K-9 was kind of cut short by the dog's illness. That was unfortunate because they had a really successful K-9 career for the time that they were here. Bruce has been one of our primary range officers and has been instrumental in getting our officers trained not only just in proficiency of firearms, but tactically. I'm waiting to see who's gonna take over the range notes. Right? So Bruce, any time that there was an officer-involved incident that was violent, an officer killed, a officer involved in a shooting, anything that, mass casualty incident, Bruce wrote a blurb up about that to everybody in the police department and a little synopsis of the incident and what we could do as officers to make sure it didn't happen here. And I am thankful to say that it hasn't happened here. And people look forward to Bruce's notes from the range. And they actually got disappointed when there wasn't one sometimes. So it was, that's gonna be missed. We finally got him to stop using all caps when he typed, so that was... It was a positive. So people are already joking about who's gonna take that over, and we're still waiting for somebody to step up. But feel free, you still have our email address, as you can still... Bruce has over 25 commendations in his file from everything from, "Thank you for helping me find my dog and helped me push my car," to being one of the officers who finds an armed robbery suspect or worked on a murder scene or something like that. So Bruce's career has been full for 31 years. Was our primary FTO during his last, really, 10 years of his career. Primary range officer. Everything Bruce brought to the department is gonna be missed on that shift and that team. And there's a lot of leadership and guidance that's gone from day shift right now. So on behalf of everybody, Bruce... We have for Bruce his retirement badge and commission card and his plaque for appreciation for 31 years of dedicated service to the Glendale Heights Police Department and the community.
Again, Bruce, thank you.
Kids, thank you. For allowing the badge to you, sir. Being there for him? Mayor?
Yeah.
You have something for Bruce?
Sure do. Thank you so much for your service to our community. All the residents and our staff, your village board, we thank you and hope you enjoy this new chapter in your life.
You're welcome. So Randy was, Randy actually has 34 years of service with the Village. He was hired in 1985 as a CSO. And he spent about three years as a CSO. And then on January 9th, 30 years ago, 31 years ago today, or yesterday, Randy was sworn in as a police officer. So Bruce has nine days on him. Which mattered on their shift because Bruce got first pick for... So July, or January 9th, 1988, he was sworn in as a full-time police officer. He's got 34 years with the Village. Randy has done almost everything you can do in the police department. Besides spending time in patrol and being one of our go-to ETs and all-around just jack-of-all-trades in patrol, primary ET on many, many major crime scenes. Again, going through his file, he was the lead ET in a lot of our violent crimes that we had pre-Task Force. Never, never said no, no matter how bad it was or how hot it was. And Randy's a sweater. Randy just said, "Yep," and did everything that he was asked of. He's actually spent two tours in detectives. And he's finishing up his fifth year right now in detectives. Fourth year, third year. So he is on his way out, leaving from investigations. And Randy has been the go-to guy. He, not only is some comedic relief in there, but he has been the mentor to our youngest guys. Randy's got 31 years on the police department, 31 years of being a police officer, and our next junior guy in detectives has five. So there's a lot of wisdom and mentoring and advice that's being left out of investigations right now. It's gonna be hard to make up for the officers that are replacing Randy, you know, have five years on the job. So there's a lot of institutional knowledge, a lot of experience, a lot of wisdom that's being lost out of our investigations division. FTO, Evidence Technician. Randy's always got a smile on his face. Always. And it's happy to see when you walk in and you see Randy and there's always something positive to say. There's always a joke to be made about whatever bad team he likes that year from Houston or somewhere. So it's a, it's been a great time that I've spent with both of you, Randy and Bruce, for 30 years that I've been here. Randy has over 20 commendations, one lifesaving award. Lisa's been there with him the entire time for the most part. His two kids aren't here, Tara and Taylor, but he's got two daughters that he adores. So Lisa, thank you for everything that you've done to help Randy get through his 30 years, 31 years on the department. The department is losing two of our longtime, longstanding, dominant, if you will, officers within the department. And you're gonna be deeply missed, both of you. We have Randy's official retirement badge, commission card, and his plaque for 31 years of service. Mayor?
Thank you for all 31 years of service to our community and our residents, and we truly appreciate it. Appreciate it. I hate to see you guys go.
Want to walk down the room?
Yeah, sure.
Hello, Susan? Good. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you to the Mayor and the Village Board, everybody up here, for all the support that you've given me and this police department in the Village of Glendale Heights. It really means a lot. To my fellow graduate, Bruce, congratulations. Very well done. My wife. She's been my rock. She's been my sounding board. There's no way I could've done 31 years here without you. She's blessed me with two beautiful daughters, Taylor and Tara, who couldn't be here tonight. Prior engagement, one's out of state and one's working her little tail off in show choir. So they couldn't be here tonight. To all the people that I've had contact in my whole entire career, bad or good, you've made me a better person. You've made me a better husband. You've made me a better father. And you've made me a better police officer for it. That's everybody. To the guys in the back, the guys that are sitting down, the guys that I've worked with, past and present, thank you for letting me be part of this family. I really appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
I don't know if I can follow that. Just want to thank everybody, thank the board for allowing me to be a Glendale Heights police officer. You have a really good department and very professional, and they try for you guys every day. For anybody out there that I've worked with, I hope something I've said in training or just at work sticks and helps you get through the shift. That's the important thing, get through the shift. And I hope something that I did did that. And my family, you know, like Randy said, you can't do it without your family. You got your work family, you got your home family. You gotta be able to keep them both happy at the same time. Doesn't always work. But I thank you all.
Again, from everybody, from all the retired officers to the current officers, to everybody that's in the back. Sixty-two years of service is gonna be impossible to replace. The legacy you guys have left is pretty high, it's pretty strong. People, our department is better because of both of you. And thank you. And Randy's here for one more day, Bruce, don't be a stranger. You're free to come back anytime you want to. Anytime you wanna come in range, anytime you wanna come help out, anytime you wanna do anything, Randy, the same for you. You're, don't be strangers. The department is still yours. You've had a great deal to do with the success of it. You had a great deal to do with the shaping of it and the molding of it. And be proud of that. And the legacy you've left with these young officers hopefully carries over. Both of you as FTOs and mentors, gonna be really, really hard to replace. So thank you both for everything and your years of service. Randy's walkout is at four o'clock tomorrow afternoon. Both of their retirement parties are, is Saturday at the golf course. So if you haven't bought your tickets, please do. It's gonna be a pretty fun event. That's really all I got, I know I've been talking a lot on my soapbox here, but it's hard to, it's hard not to say enough good things about the careers of both these officers. So, thank you.
Yes, I wanna thank both of you again. And remember, Summerfest, if you feel like stopping by, I know you'll miss not being here. But thank you.
Alright, so we have cake? And I know we have an executive session that we have to do?
Yeah, I've gotta do that. I need a motion to recess to executive session to discuss collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to the Open Meetings Act V ILC S 120 slash 2 C 2. And pending litigation improbable or imminent litigation pursuant to the Open Meetings Act V ILC S 120 slash 2 C 11. And appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body pursuant to Illinois Compiled Statutes V ILC S 120 slash 2 C 1. So if anybody wants to read all that back, okay. Trustee Light?
So moved?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Now we're done.
Okay. So...
What?
Need a roll call vote.
I need to call the... You'd think I'd know this by now. Roll call vote, please, Marie.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
We will be recessing to executive session.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, village board. We'll have cake.
Could I please have a motion to call this meeting back to order? Trustee Schmidt?
I move we re, call this meeting back to order from executive session.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second. It's not coming out real well.
I couldn't hear you.
Neither could I.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will resume with our meeting. We're ready for public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone here in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, you have the consent agenda before you? Trustee Schmidt?
Move we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Mirtata? Sorry. Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Sorry.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business, so we have new business. Number one is an ordinance to approve and authorize the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between Bloomingdale Township and the Village of Glendale Heights for mosquito abatement services for a four-year term, 2019 through 2022. This is first reading. Number two, an ordinance to authorize the issuance of an entertainment permit for live entertainment for Q by a restaurant located at 2240 Bloomingdale Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is first reading. Number three, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement with American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Assessor, Council Thirty-One AFL-CIO Local Thirty-Seven-Sixty-Eight. And this is resolution number 2019 dash R dash zero four. Trustee Pojek?
So moved, Mayor?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 dash R dash zero four is approved. We are now back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, a motion to adjourn would be in order? Trustee Schroder?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned and just so you have, committee of the whole?
That is correct, Mayor. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting, agenda today for Thursday, July tenth, 2019. Is there any additions or deletions? Anybody from the public has a comment? Seeing none, committee recommendations, land commission. A recommendation to approve an application for a conditional use in the C 3 general commercial, commercial, commercial district to allow an open sales lot to permit the operation of an automobile dealership located at 635 East North Avenue slash New Wheels. Is there a motion? Mayor?
Move it to the board with the recommendation to concur.
Second.
Discussion? Mike?
John, do they plan on doing any updates per se to this lot at all?
No, they don't. They just are, they, this was the former manager who's taking over ownership and, besides changing the sign, we're, we've given them direction to, of course, remove the vehicles from the grass, which they had been complying with, and we're making sure that they're gonna continue to comply with that and keep the aisles open, but they're not planning to make any changes to the building.
None, huh?
No.
Okay. Place always look cluttered. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Discussion regarding an ordinance to approve and authorize the execution of an option easement agreement between SBA 2012 TC Assets LLC and the Village of Glendale Heights. Mike, is that?
That is, that is me.
That's you.
We've had...
I'm sorry, is there a motion first? Or is this discussion?
Discussion.
I think it's just discussion. Discussion?
Yeah, let's discuss first.
Okay, go ahead, Mike, sorry.
We've been approached by SBA for the purpose of granting a fifty-five-year easement for the cellphone tower, that is, to the east of the building, on the east side of the campus. This has been there for, I believe it's since about 1999. And the current lease on the site runs through 2031. SBA has offered one point three-five million dollars upfront in order to secure a fifty-five-year easement for that telecommunications tower and the two buildings associated with it to stay just where it is. Part of the agreement that we would reach with SBA, should you give us the option to go forward, would be that there would be an exclusive site. In other words, we would not allow another communications tower on the campus. That, of course, would be for the term of the fifty-five-year easement. So essentially, for the last maybe two months, we've been negotiating with SBA for the, the one-time payment of the one point three-five million and also certain terms that would allow flexibility for the village in order to subdivide if need be, if laws change in the next fifty-five years, and so forth. We've been counseled by Matt Holmes from SRD, and he has given quite a bit of attention to this as well. So it's essentially, at this point, up to the board to decide whether we want to go forward with granting a fifty-five-year easement to SBA to maintain the tower in the back parking lot.
In your opinion, is this a good deal for the village?
The current lease goes through 2031. The remaining payments on that lease amount to approximately one point four million dollars. So from between now and 2031, there will be approximately seventy to seventy-five thousand dollars a year that would be coming to the village. That will stop, and they will give us a one-time payment of one point three-five million dollars. If we didn't have some immediate needs, I would say that it may not be such a good deal. But with the immediate needs that we have on our water meter and MXU program, this would pay for approximately twenty to twenty-five percent of that project. And also with the needs of the irrigation system at the golf course, the one point three million dollars would be an influx of cash that the village could use right now, as opposed to seventy thousand dollars over the next twelve years.
'Cause in fifty-five years, a lot of things can change.
A lot of things can change.
We won't be around.
Correct. None of us will be around.
None of us.
A lot of things can change.
I meant speaking for you.
The telecommunications industry certainly can change. It's changed a great deal in the last twenty-five years. I would imagine the next twenty-five years will bring on just as much change. And in fact, it could bring on change to the point in 2031, when this lease is, is due, that it just goes away. So come 2031, there's two options. Number one, they could renegotiate with the village. And we have a very good lease right now with them, which is very lucrative for the village. Leases are seventy to seventy-five thousand dollars a year. And we even have a four percent kicker every year on that. We would probably not see that in 2031. They would have the option of removing the tower, and then we would have that, we would gain four more parking spaces in the back lot. Or we can enter into this agreement, fifty-five years from now, they may not need that tower there anymore. But that's on them. We've already gotten the one-time payment. We get that once we close on the lease.
Okay, trustee Schroder?
I just have one question. Their existing lease now is good until 2031.
Correct.
Now, when you give them this extra fifty-five years, are you adding those fifty-five to today, 2019, or are you adding it to 2031?
Today, 2019. So it's fifty-five years from today.
So that would be 2074. I mean, I've got it here, and not that I'm coming out of my head.
No, that's, that's good, yes.
So that in 2074, then this will, this lease will expire.
Correct.
Alright. You know, don't forget, we have to think of the people who are coming here in the future.
Absolutely.
Are we doing this for the good of them, because as you said, we won't be here. And it's important that we take care of what's happening in the future when we're gone.
Yes, the footprint in the back parking lot is fairly small. Like I said, it's about the size of four parking spaces. So there's not a lot of loss to us. If need be, and this is one of the things that we were negotiating with SBA, if need be, if there's changes in the law that say, because this campus now has a a profit center on it, there's a piece of the property that now uses it and we wanna make a tax, well, we can subdivide that out. We can say, no, we're just gonna make this one lot all by itself for tax purposes. And so we've negotiated that with SBA to make sure that they understood that any taxes that could be necessary in the future would be their responsibility. We've tried to protect our future generations as best we can with this.
Alright, thank you.
Trustee Schmidt?
Mike, I see there is a clause in there for insurance. I assume that's liability, so that if the tower comes crashing down, that the village will not...
That's SBA's responsibility, correct.
Do we require maintenance on the tower in order to maintain that?
They will need to, they will need to maintain it, that's, but that's their responsibility.
Okay.
Trustee Light? That was one of my questions, basically, does SBA own the tower itself? They, they just lease the property itself? Or who is the tower owned by if it's not owned by them?
The tower is owned by SBA, and they lease the parcel of land behind the building that it's on.
Have we ever been approached, 'cause you said this is, is going to, by other companies, to do such a thing, the same thing? You said we have to limit to only SBA's dish or whatever is up there, only to them? We've never been approached by anyone else to utilize that tower, or?
Well, they wouldn't be able to utilize that tower. They would have to go through SBA to utilize that tower.
Right.
SBA does have several tenants on that tower, but it's still SBA's asset. We do have cell towers in other locations throughout the village, and that would not be touched. It's just the municipal campus that has the exclusivity.
One tower, then?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not like they're locking up a whole bunch of different towers?
Correct. And one of the also, one of the things, the Small Cell Wireless Act that has gone into play both federally and at the state level, we did carve out language in the easement agreement that if, if we're required by the Small Cell, small, that... That, that will have to come onto the campus because it's required by law.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? No? You just looking forward?
You need a motion.
We need to move it to the board.
Need a motion for this?
Move it to the board.
Mayor?
Move it to the board with the recommendation to concur.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
There's nothing on the other, and then we need an adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.